I call a meeting of March 24th, 2015 in order. Good to have everybody here tonight. As always, we have an invocation tonight by Councilman Anderson. And then we'll have our pledge with the lead. That's everyone.
That is great. Our Father, make us an instrument of Your peace. Where there's hatred, sow love. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there is sadness, joy. Where there's doubt, hope. Where there's darkness, light. Grant that we may not seek to be consoled as to console, to understand and to be understood, to love and to be loved. But it is in giving that we receive, and it is in pardon that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we have eternal life. Amen.
Praise the Lord. Praise the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're starting right with approval of our agenda for the March 24th, 2015 meeting. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Do we have any additions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have one item covering a county employee that's made some good talk about.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have one executive session matter, contractual matter, uh, briefing after our meeting.
Clarification on Mr. Nash's request. Would that be an executive session?
No.
In addition, Mr. Thompson, contractual matter. We've got one person, one employment matter we can discuss too.
One in open session about a county employee. Too many executive sessions, a contractual matter and employment matter. We'll vote by show with your right hand. Everybody in place? That's six more. How many six?
Six there.
Next thing is our last promotion for approval of our minutes for the March 10th, 2015 meeting.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, we got a second.
Second.
Got a second. It's intercorrections. If none, all in favor, raise your right hand. That's six, six there.
Yeah.
Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Mr. Jim Coven. Well, I'd like to have him with us.
I'll eat here on this side.
I grant you that. First thing tonight is a public hearing ordinance, 782. This is our fire bond, $2,450,000. Ordinance 782. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak for our hands, become part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of county council. I would like to express my support for this ordinance and the subsequent upgrading of the rural fire service here in Lawrence County. I appreciate the hard work of Greg Lindley and his staff and the entire fire service for their cooperation in the plan. County council has studied, changed, and arrived at a plan to make Lawrence County Fire Service better for the citizens of our county. Thank you for your hard work and the difficult decisions you have to make when it requires additional funding. As I've said before, we promote economic development. If we want Lawrence County to grow and prosper, we need to be willing to invest in ourselves. And that is what we, you would be doing tonight in approving this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else? Will we open the floor for a motion for the third reading of ordinance 782?
Mr. Chairman, I close the public hearing.
Then I'll open it for the third reading of ordinance 782.
Mr. Chairman, I move for a third reading and approval of ordinance 782.
Second.
We got a motion in the second. And we'll have discussion. We'll start with Mr. Keith Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, it's been a lot of hard work. Greg and his staff, Florida council staff and prosecutors and his staff as well as many council members spent a lot of time involved in discussions. It wasn't taken lightly. Every step was very, very considered and not a step for the officials. I understand how we both intend to think of it.
Mr. Matt. I'm totally in support of 782. I think we had a long time coming, but we have to crawl before we walk. We have to walk before we run. So I think this is the right way to go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. John.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I support the renovation of the 31 stations and rebuilding of the young station. My concern lies with the additional four new stations. That is definitely is going to lead to more taxes to upkeep those additional stations. So I'm curious on the estimates and the yearly cost of those four additional stations. What will that add to the fire budget? That's my guess.
I've taken this justice over and over again in favor of just proceeding with this.
Mr. Pitt.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a few comments regarding this. The, while it is a tax increase in capital, a bond increase to construct these stations, it is the reoccurring cost that I have concerns and reservations about. And particularly, and I'm reading from the FY 1415 Fire General Fund, subtotal of salaries is approximately $275,000 right now in the fire service. We're operating the subtotals at about $1.9 million. And until we know the additional expenses that will come with the construction of these, I don't think we have a definite answer. And that is no fault of Mr. Lindley and the fire service. They have done a good job of presenting the plan. And I applaud his efforts and his staff. Also, in this current budget, we had a 5% increase recommendation in PPE or personal protection equipment last year. I'm not sure if that was totally adopted. According to this budget, it was. And right now, we have millage in the form of 19.9 mills in the fire service in the unincorporated areas of the county. With one fire mill bringing in approximately $134,000, as stated by Ms. Sally Langston, County Officer, last year. 16.1 mills were required to operate the county fire service, totaling $2,153,375. And 1.9 mills went towards the reserve fund. Then, of course, we had the revenue from the City of Clinton and the City of Fountainhead contracts at approximately $490,000. Having said all of that, I think that, I believe, we will be faced with funding additional equipment, funding additional salaries, and a reoccurring expense. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, I have no further comments.
I also have reservations that I stated at the very start about we've got 20 mills, tax going on the fire service, and we're not going to have any more. And I think it's kind of foolish to think that we, I might say the wrong word by saying foolish, but I just don't really, I can't really understand how we could take the money. I know Fountainhead's not got anything to do with this, but it's been discussed in the past about taking the money that we pay Fountainhead and finance a new fire department that forever paid employees. I think that's totally out of the question. They just not much money to do that. As far as this goes, I think we'll have a return on our money. It's been said like in the past, $10 on the $100,000 house, but I don't like to say that. Say it, but it costs you $20 a year. $20 a year is a small price to pay to maybe have the possibility of our ISO rating going from five to four countywide. And to reduce the insurance in these areas where the people's insurance is doubled or tripled. I think it'd be a good return on our money. And another thing I say, there's nothing like seeing help coming when you need. And I'm going to support it 100%. So if there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All vote.
Oh, is it here? Phil, you have a convention maker? That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Governor.
Oh, I'm going to inject right now, Mr. David Naif, for a county employee.
Phil, it's been a while since I did this, but I couldn't have been asked to do any better fellow than this. Many years' service he has given Lawrence County. And the county makes one award whose highest is the county, which is Henry Lawrence Award. But on the height of Lawrence Council, I would like to make the nomination of the employee of county employee to receive the Henry Lawrence Award for his service. This employee has provided many years of valuable public service to the citizens of Lawrence County, as well as being instrumental and with hands on many capital projects for Lawrence County. These projects consisted of construction and expansion of the Lawrence County Detention Center, renovations of Hillcrest Square as county judicial services office, and presently, the expansion of new administration offices at Hillcrest Square. During his career with Lawrence County, he provided the exemplary service in serving the citizens of Lawrence County as public works director for 25 years, starting in '89 and ending in '15. This man commanded the leadership with Lawrence County Transportation Committee. During his tenure, he was Lawrence County employee. And he was never too busy to listen to requests from citizens of the world. This person, you may well have concluded by now, Mr. Scott Hollen, Director of Lawrence County Public Works. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion recommending Scott Hollen for the Henry Lawrence Award. A well-deserved person. So I'd like to make that a motion.
We got a motion, we got a second. Second. Got a motion and a second. Does anybody have any discussion they'd like to say? Start with Mr. Pitt.
I don't think anyone could be any more deserving, Mr. Hollen. Congratulations and thank you for your time of service.
Ms. Ann.
I think it's well overdue for us to target some employees who give some service to the county. Thank you, Scott.
I also want to thank Mr. Hollen that'll leave about 20, 27, 25 years. Yeah, Mr. Hollen, thank you very much.
It is.
I want to reiterate, thank the call for the years of service. He certainly is a great department man. He's a leader in this county. As a matter of fact, when I first came on council, the first year, I always thought he was the next administrator. You know, I kept saying, well, he's the next in line. He's the next in line.
Are you getting back?
Yeah. We couldn't get rid of him. I mean, but Scott has had a lot of years, lots of ability to use, and has served for Iowa County very well. And certainly, that's.
I can truthfully say that I've had a good relationship with Mr. Hollen. I've never called him, I can't remember anything I've ever called him about, that he didn't take care of whether it was the State Highway Department or the, Scott said, I know somebody in the State Highway Department will take care of that. So I like to give him praise.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, Governor. The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing for a Lawrence County ordinance, 783. It's ordinance to amend and repeal and restate the emergency medical services in Lawrence County. This replaces six different ordinances that were outdated. And the public hearing is now. This is a big surprise. No one speaks. I close the public hearing and ask for a motion for a reading of ordinance 783.
Mr. Chairman, I move for a third reading of the ordinance 783.
We got a motion, we have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second. I'm going to ask for discussion again. Mr. Thompson.
I have a request, Mr. Chairman. I think we've followed through, and I'm certainly grateful for this.
Mr. Matt.
I'd dislike the pursuit. Answers of order to this ordinance. We had too many of them, wasn't very clear. I'd like also to commend our 911 people over there to take care of that. Everybody's got a hard job, so I want to thank them for that. And I hope this makes it better.
John.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. After much due diligence and thought, I'm also supporting this ordinance. I like the fact that it has in writing that we're forming partnerships, public-private partnerships, to supplement EMS. So is it per food? No, but that's what we're trying to do. There's always room to improve. So that's all my discussion.
Ms. Ann.
Have discussion.
Mr. Pitt.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, if there's nothing else, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Next thing on our item, item on our agenda is a upon the approval of Lawrence County disability and special needs. You don't address that.
There's a letter in here from Mr. Tavener, who's the executive director of that organization, who recommends that Mrs. Betty Beasley be nominated. Is this what the governor said? Okay. The county council nominated Betty Beasley Lawrence to serve on the disability board. This comes from Tavener. This Beasley, I think, is a long time before we found out the bank, that's, I think, in a very well-known community, I think would be a very good one. If you want to make a nomination, we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we submit the name of Betty Beasley to be on the board for disability and special needs as requested by Mr. Tavener.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Does anybody have any discussion? I would vote by show with your right hand. All in favor? Next thing on our agenda, life funding request for Greg Lindley. He just got to take one full bag.
That's hard to come back to. I gave each council member a copy of just a list of AFG grants and forfeit grants that we have worked on since 2009 to try to help get additional funds for fire departments. The one message we're not, we've done this before in the past, is we have two fire departments. Well, we actually have three. The third grant truck is not, is not yet being finished yet. But in 2013, we wrote six or seven vehicle grants. We were awarded three. They're brush rescue trucks. And I think you should have a picture of something that it looked like, it was a 500 rescue truck. One message we're not is to take out the fire general contingency, the health of fire departments, is the 5% match that's required. Ones for the Joanna Fire Department, ones for the Hickory Tavern Fire Department. We still have the entire ballot, 22 ballots, that said all of it that was supposed to be in the contentious just there. I'm asking $13 to two feet of two fire departments. And again, these are two trucks of the value that are costing over $260,000 together. And it's actually costing the county about $13,000 of these two trucks. So that's it.
Greg, I appreciate it. And I've always said grants will convey the future of the fire service. Let's spend $13,000 to get four million dollars. I think that's a good grant. Thought I need to ask for a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve expenditure of $13,250 to be taken from the contingent fund of the fire service budget with a balance of $22,277.67 for the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second. I'd like to say one of these is going to Joanna, and the other one's going to Hickory Tavern Fire Department. Some of the other fire departments, I've already got this truck.
Correct, correct. We have already had sevens. I think these two will count as seven of these types of trucks. Correct.
Would you like to hit on what we've already received? And I know you might not have it with you, but what we've already received in grants in the fire service over the last short period of time?
From 2008 to present, we have received, and this is the assistance fire department grants. These are vehicles and equipment of over $2.5 billion in grants. And the volunteer fire assistance forfeit grants, a little bit over $81,000 has been done as part of grants. Both of these are very, very competitive grants to get, but I still think this shows a lot of work, a lot of commitment to get this type of revenue I'll probably want to give to the county.
Does anybody got any questions? Greg.
Mr. Chairman, I do, I would like to say that this amount, a little over $3 million of Mr. Lindley just put it there. He and I discussed this a long ago. I asked him some of the questions. He had those numbers. That's $3 million that we as a county didn't have to put out. And I know that Mr. Lindley spent a lot of time for those grants, but just let me correctly come wrong. A lot of the, and the chiefs and their staff, their department folks also spend a lot of time in the road to do the chiefs guiding and getting these grants. This wasn't done just by.
This is not a single, it takes, it takes the fire chiefs, it takes the staff we have. We have some fire departments that have their own members that are writing these grants. But again, these grants have been around for years. But before, about 2008, the department were not really trying to get them. And I think it's important that we try to help them. And we have been.
These 2008 numbers, that, since you came on staff?
The 2008 grant, I came in January 2009. 2008 grant was wrote by a member of the Melfield Fire Department.
I couldn't remember the date. I think the $3 million we've all been paying you.
Anybody else got any questions? Greg? I'd just like to say job well done for everybody in the fire service. All right, we'll vote by show with your right hand. Okay, it's down to Mr. Sager, Minister.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of reminders about some things coming up in the next week or so. There will be a retirement drop-in and honors polling on Friday, March 27th, from 2:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. at Hillcrest Square, I guess in front of the main courtroom, left end, right end of the building. That'll be from 2:00, 3:00, 30:00. On Saturday, March 28th, there will be an event out on I-26, I think, where a dedication of Memorial Intersection for Deputy Roger Wright, who was tried to kill several years ago. That's 11 o'clock. I think some of you have got an invitation. I think the chair's office, the parking will be at the Blue Ocean Restaurant. It's on the east side, I guess, of I-26. That'll be 11 o'clock on Saturday. And also on Saturday, Lawrence County Sheriff's Office is playing Clinton Department of Public Safety in a basketball game. So, I think before we retire, it's a Saturday parade. On 28th, that is 28th, Clinton, Clinton Drive. This fundraiser for a kid. And you know, we all, tragically yesterday, and Mr. Danny Paul passed away last week. And I think everyone, just bad one at this table, I think, at the funeral yesterday. I told somebody a while ago, Ed would love that. That was quite a event. And the walls was done to play a brief memorial here. We are looking things to, and thinking about things to honor Mr. Danny for his almost 28, seven terms of service to Lawrence County. And we'll certainly, that'll be brought to you all for consideration at a later date. Tragically, I guess, but there is a need for a special election to fill, I think I see three, I think, in the county, in the council makeup. And the election commission is working on that. I think I saw some dates as we told, end of July, I believe, before when all the compliance state laws, certain days, were opening the books for registration, or for signup. And then there'll be time for a primary, then there'll be time for a general election. I think it's, I'm not sure of the date, but it's late July, it'll be well upside. And we'll, keep you aware of that as we go along. Mr. Chairman, I believe that's all I have.
It's 6:00, and we have a 15-minute period for public comment. If you got anything you'd like to say, come forward, state your name, and lay it on. If you got anything you'd like to say, come forward, state your name, lay it on.
Mr. Coleman, if y'all remember me. I'd like to thank everybody for their service, but I wanted to recognize two people tonight. And I want to thank Scott and congratulate him on his retirement. Scott and I go way back to play football years ago, but Scott's served this county well the past twenty-five years, and Scott would want to say thank you. And then, then my, then my friend, Ed McDaniel, I served with him for twenty years. I know David is trying to write a book on all his sayings that he had. Ed always had a quick wit, you know, and every year, every two years, he'd bring us back, tell us the story of what happened down in Orangeburg. And if we went through it personally like he did, we would all, it would be close to our hearts. But it was with him, but he's served this county well, he's a friend. I met with him every two weeks, just like I did with a lot of y'all, you know, and then, at the base, he had the best of Lawrence County. I'd like to say publicly, thank you, Ed, for your service, thank you.
Thank you. My name's Dorothy James, and I just want to make sure this is the proper time to bring up new situation. This is a first time.
All right, now, a bit.
This is my first time attending a council meeting, and so is this a proper time to bring forth a new business?
Yeah, yeah, fine.
Okay, well, I've lived in Lawrence County now for about three years, and over the last two years, the litter that has grown has just become egregious. I live more towards the Greenwood County line, and Saturday, I participated in the cleanup of Lawrence. I did more the area, Alton Chapel, four eighteen, one oh one. I didn't even touch, come close to touching, the trash that needs to be cleaned up. I am more than willing to do my part to participate in helping do that, but I was thinking, it is so bad. Is it time for us as a county to do a county-wide, ongoing litter campaign? Maybe through the schools, the businesses, the rotary, the chambercomers, the fire departments, police departments? Public service announcements, putting up signs, you know, for the fines for litter? I have spent Saturday and six hours today personally picking up trash and hauling it off. And I just wonder, is this something that the county council could help promote, get started?
This is something that everybody in the county is gonna have to get behind, though. I don't see that we need t-shirts and special kind of tools to pick up trash. All we need is trash bags, maybe a pair of gloves, uh.
Well, I think we need the awareness, I think we need businesses and churches and all the, all the buses that we can reach out and pull in, you know, and through the schools. Because, you know, children are a big influence on the parents, please daddy, don't throw that out the window. You know, sisters, little brothers, you know, influence them, their peers. And we do need signs, I think, just to make people aware, there's a, and I'm not sure what fine is, but just has a number, a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for littering, you know. But I think this needs to be a county push, and we have to make the people aware of the problem. I'm fully aware of it, just riding it down the street, it, I cringe riding down some roads. But I don't think there's enough awareness among the people and the different organizations to organize, to get out and clean these areas up. Not just in the city, but out in the out areas, down one oh one, four eighteen, you know, Allen Bridge Road. These, these areas are just ugly, you know, and they shouldn't be. This is beautiful countryside, and it should look beautiful, but it doesn't. And I'd also like to address the grass cutting, because being out there personally, putting my hands to picking up the trash, the big cups and things that are laying out there, when it's, before the grass is cut, it's just a cup. But after the grass is cut, if it's not picked up, and the lawn mower hits it, the plastic becomes twenty slices of plastic and fifteen pieces of styrofoam, and, you know. So, as the county passes the grass, or there's the responsibility for cutting, maybe a program to walk down and pick it up before the grass is cut. Because it really was quite a job. That's all I have to say, I'd like to present that to the county council and maybe start, you know, consider a push for a ongoing county-wide litter program.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may, I'll make a remark, I know the chamber is an ongoing, uh, has started an ongoing litter campaign. I know that the city of Lawrence, the city police department, as well as the Lawrence County Sheriff's Department, have all joined in a, in a county-wide campaign to find, and to locate and finding what they see littering, including cigarette butts or anything. And I know that a few of those have been written, and I agree with you a hundred percent, if people would just, if people would clean their own street, then the problem would be solved. I don't know what we could do, certainly there are some efforts out there, we could join, maybe join that chamber effort or something.
We are looking at a couple of things, one is, I think, Mr. Tyson was looking at maybe getting some state images in here, or local image in here, that we can do something, that you like to put people on the road to do this stuff. I anticipated the pickup on Saturday with the t-shirt and the stick that you have there, you're my age, you can't bend over, so you have to. And people literally throw the stuff out when you're picking it up. It's gonna take, it's gonna take a sea change, the way people in this county think, you know, and I'm not trying to be smart, but if you don't throw it out, you might pick it up. And I mean, and I think that's what we gotta get to, and I think the chamber's making an effort in it. You know, we've got litter officers out there, we've got three of them, cover seven hundred and twenty square miles, whatever we got, so, you know, this lady's point's well taken. It's terrible, you know, and I think, I think everybody realizes that, and, you know, and the chamber picks up, they do tons, you know, every, every, but it's like four, three-four times a year, you know, and I agree that it is something we're aware of, I think it's piled there with, over twenty-five years it's been here, so, you know, and I wish, you know, you just wouldn't throw the box out of the car, it would, but we can't. If you don't see them, you can't, you can't catch them, you can't charge them, that's the whole problem.
It is a point well taken, it would take a cultural change, basically, put up and take out, I agree. Although there are efforts, I've seen some newspaper ads and others along the radio station, I hear them talking about it there for a long time. So, it is, we are heading in the right direction.
Who, who would be in charge of, like, the public service announcements, like, getting it on the radio and, you know, having?
They're doing that, to a degree, they are, they are doing that, and that's Lawrence Chamber Congress, this old, this county's support.
Yes, I've been up and working with Amanda Mungin.
They, they have taken that as a major, regular, I know their staff and others have taken that, I think, they've got committees working on all sorts of things. It's just the fact, it's just so big, and it just, you know, and they had two hundred people, again, I mean, it's a big county, I think, two hundred people outside. And part of that as well, in trying, in addition to picking it up, which is, which is, I said, as you know, it's hard work, it's also trying to get to the schools, they're doing some things in the schools, I think in both districts, or at least, you know, to try to get to third graders and people that, you know, that they do presentations and that sort of thing. So, it's a huge issue, and it's just, it's just, you know, and the road, I, my church picked up a road here in right, right beside Lawrence. And by the time you go through one time, you're about to go through again, you know, it's just, it's terrible.
I agree, I've already backtracked on Alton Chapel, you know, since Saturday, but thank you for hearing me.
Does anybody else? What we're plugging, public comment time, and I'd like to ask, if a person did get out and clean up the side of the road or something, and I know we got the sticker thing in Lawrence County, if you live in Lawrence County, you can put up, pull up to the station, you got to have a sticker before you can dump trash. If a person was out here picking up trash on the side of the road, and he pulled up, and he had ten bags of trash, what would be the situation?
They should take that, and we take all of it, the, for the cleanup, the chambers, the mess, we take all of it, if they want to throw it into our site, we take that, and try to track the weights of that too, get that back. We can take the roadside, but there may be some items in that that we have to send somewhere else called dereg, deregulation. We can, we take a little.
All right, I close public comment time, but. All right, it's time for the comment council, I will stop with Mr. Pitt.
Like, Mr. Chairman, I too would like to echo the words of Mr. Coleman and express my few years that I had with Mr. McDaniel and learning a lot of his sayings, and I I can't help but share this one saying he said to me, not sure what it meant, but here it goes, he said, and I quote, "He's been everywhere but heaven, got everything but religion." Not sure what it meant, Mr. McDaniel certainly shared that, but I took it, I said, I need to write that down. There were a lot of those sayings, he was a very, very smart and wise individual, and I just am thankful for the few years that I got to spend with him, thank you.
Ms. Ann?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. General?
I don't have any comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Knight?
Mr. Chairman, over twelve years, I've been on council with Ed, he always made good business decisions. He looked at all sides of things and weighed them out, and he was a good friend of mine, I called him a friend, he did me. But I enjoyed working with Ed McDaniel. And while I got to the floor, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, I'm glad that Dorothy James came, I didn't get to meet her before the meeting, she lives at my council district, off four eighteen, on Pennington Road.
No, I live on Fallon, which is off the Alton Chapel.
And Debbie Dunleavy called in, she was saying that Dorothy, she called her Dottie, James was coming to council tonight, but that was about two thirty when she called. And then we get to talk, and goes, James, can you give a phone number, Miss Dunleavy, or I would've talked to you before about the recognizances earlier. We do have to help people, it's a concern. And I know Mr. Holland, he has picked up, standing in the road over the years, the roads leading to the county block sites, he picks them up periodically. Three eighty-five, South Carolina Highway Department picked up, up three eighty-five furniture roads up to Brimble County line last week. They had bags up, at three, they had them twenty-five thirty, they had a big old trailer, and they were really picking it up good. But right now, it's littered again. People don't care, they throw out stuff, everything, they don't care if they're three to five, out in the country, they're working. And I don't know what's happening, they were stopping, obviously, picking up trash last week, and we got three bags on the road out there. Three children, teenagers coming down the road, and one of them, he got to me, he threw the big cup, this tall, that big a round, down in the road, and me picking up trash. I said, would you please pick that up and put it in a bag that I've got in the golf cart? He reluctantly did it, but I thought, boy, if you don't, I will call sheriff, I will swear on it. But he did pick it up and put it in the bag. But that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, that's why I think the answer is in a big awareness, is to make it a really big issue, you know, through the newspapers and the radios and signs and schools and, you know, going out and speaking to churches and, you know, having the police departments and the fire departments. Everybody, you know, doing a push countywide. Because I think a lot of people just aren't quite aware of how bad, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Are you aware of what the block sites are for trash in Lawrence County?
Yes, sir, I took two, two, full of bags.
Household trash, but I don't think Mr. Holland, they were questioning anything, they were picking up the road. State roads, state furniture bags, you can tell them that you out, before you pile them up, they will come to you.
Mr. Todd? Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the good crowd for being here tonight, and we got a lot of department heads that support the EMS and power. We certainly appreciate, appreciate everyone coming tonight, so.
I'd like to do that too, we got a lot of public safety here tonight, and I was glad to have you, we appreciate what you do, be careful out there. And I had the honor of being able to say a few words at Mr. McDaniel's funeral last week. Ed man locked me. I've known him, I've known him several years, I knew him several years before I went on council, but I didn't really know him, if you can understand what I'm saying. Later I got on council and saw what he stood for, and how he worked, what he accomplished, and just what kind of man he was. I really admired the man, I swear I did, I looked up to him, just like I said, doesn't matter, I call him Mr. Ed, he and I are same age, and I still call him Mr. Ed. We're gonna really miss him on this count. We got contracts that matter and important matter for executive session. We'll take a, an empty motion going to executive session.
We're going to executive session two, two hours, chairman?
Got a motion in the second, all in favor? We'll take a ten-minute break before we go into the next session.